Please join me in welcoming all of our panelists.
Well, good evening, everyone. Do we need to take a deep breath? Another one, an exhale. We're going to be doing lots of breathing tonight. I'm Simone Talma Flowers, and I'm so happy to be with you tonight. When I think about philanthropy and what had played a part in my life and when I first heard about it, you know, I think about the power that we have as women and the power of what we can do to change our community, lift up others, give them hope, and also to learn and be our best selves. I grew up in a household where giving back was just part of our values. I had parents who were deep into the Lions Club, so fundraising, giving back was just part of the lifestyle. So coming here, I've been in Austin for about 32 years. I've been working in the nonprofit community, and part of it is just a lifestyle for me. I would say joining Impact Austin two years ago, when we also, the organization I worked with, also became a community partner, and that process just really changed my life and really allowed me to look and see how the power, how the extent of my dollar can have such a major impact. So I am so thankful and appreciative of being a part of this amazing organization. And I'm so happy to be here tonight to moderate with this fabulous woman that we're going to learn about tonight. So, welcome.
Thank you.
And I would love for each one of them to just talk a little bit about themselves, you know, just share something about what got you into this work.
Okay, Diane says I should go first. That means she gets the last word, which is usually the way it is. First of all, Simone, I could listen to you all day. I just love everything that you say. So thank you so much for picking this up and adding it to your day's activity. When Simone asked this question, what got me into this work, I really had to step back and say, "I feel like I've been doing it all my life, and you might think that I've been doing it all my life." But really, two doors opened for me. The first was, all my career's been in the nonprofit sector, first in the arts. And then, another door opened in terms of the volunteer community, and I was a volunteer, a very active volunteer, in a faith-based organization, and then with education in my community, which is Indianapolis, Indiana. So there was a natural gravity then. I moved to work at the Lilly Family School of Philanthropy after I got an advanced degree there, a master's degree, not a PhD, and then I've never left. So that's the story. It's pretty simple, and it's not that different, I think, from many people here in the audience.
Thank you both. I'm thrilled to be here. And I know we want to talk about more than the folks sitting on this stage, but really locking into some of these national trends we're seeing in philanthropy. But it's not an accident that I'm here at an Impact Austin event because the Women's Impact Fund, which is the giving circle that I helped to create 16 years ago, has really been a powerful theme throughout my personal and professional life. Anyone that has the luxury that I do to blend the personal and the professional in such powerful ways is really quite blessed. So I often see with our clients and others this path from success to significance, and there's no point of inflection, I think, for each of us in that journey to be connected with such meaningful work and to be able to tie it back to a national movement that is collective giving that we'll talk more about today is truly a gift.
So step back and reflect on the big picture of philanthropy, the growing role of women in that landscape, and Impact Austin's connection to that broader picture. Diane, in your work at Bank of America, you travel the country as an unabashed advocate for philanthropy. What trends are you seeing in that, in this space?
There's so many, and we'll talk about a few of them. But the trend that sits deep in my soul is what we are beginning to see, and I believe that giving circles are the antidote, which is the contraction in the number of donors in our country. You know, I see people nodding their heads. And when tax reform was enacted in 2017, the forecasts were dire, that we were going to lose up to $20 billion in charitable giving year over year. We weren't as clear about the number of donors that we thought that we would lose. The Association of Fundraising Professionals, soon to honor you. Congratulations again, well-deserved. They self-reported that from, the fundraisers themselves, from '17 to '18, a decline in the number of donors of 4.5%. One year, 4.5%. The giving overall, adjusted for inflation, was about flat. We actually went up a little bit in actual dollars, from $410 billion to $427 billion. But what does that mean? If we're sustaining the fundraising levels, but the number of donors are declining, what we're seeing is a movement toward a smaller and more affluent circle of donors that are fueling our economy. Bank of America has partnered with the Lilly School of Philanthropy since 2006 to do a study of high net worth philanthropy. We do it every two years. I used it before I joined the bank, but now that I'm really in the throes of it, I realize how much nectar is in this research. So if you've not seen it, I encourage you to do so. What matters about it is it's an opportunity for philanthropists to be self-aware about their motivations and their strategies, and nonprofits to be smarter about how they engage with them. I'll leave you with two things. There's so many points, but two that I really want you to take away. As philanthropists, our research tells us that the number-one reason why you give is your personal values. Number-one reason, your personal values, not necessarily the community's needs. So I really caution women, in particular, to be reflective about what are your passions and motivations, and how do they connect with your narrative in ways that matter. But can you be humble and can you be curious, right? Core values for this organization to continue to grow on that forward edge of the community's greatest needs. The good news is, is our research also tells us that very, very few, only 4% of our high-net-worth donors, claim expertise in their philanthropy, right? So that's why you're joining organizations like this. So why do I think the giving circle or the collective giving movement is the answer to really democratize and diversify philanthropy? I'm going to just preach to the choir for a minute. But what I mostly want to tell you is, as powerful as Impact Austin is and how much is in this room, I want you to know that you're part of something that's much bigger nationally. So the Women's Philanthropy Institute holds a symposium every three years. I'll give the plug to invite you to come. It's, excuse me, it's March 31st, thank you Andrea, March 31st and April 1st in Chicago. We're going to be looking at the intersection of technology and giving with a gender lens, of course. But I was participating three years ago with a group of other women who are part of collective giving circles, identity-based primarily, and the Gates Foundation was there. And most people don't know that the Gates Foundation has got a funding initiative, Giving for All, to really figure out how they can push some of the pressure off of their giving to a broader group. And they gave us some money and a challenge to figure out how to put a backbone to giving circles. So they wouldn't, they don't, they don't all have the luxury of having an amazing executive director like you do. They all have fabulous volunteers, but they don't have the amazing professional staff. And so really to create an ecosystem that puts some heft behind the movement in an effort to counteract this really, really scary demographic trend.
Well, I am really interested in this, in the giving circles and how it may be an answer to the decline in our donors. So Andrea, I understand that Women's Philanthropy Institute has done a great, a lot of research around giving circles. Please share with us highlights about the research that you've done.
So when I came in here, I didn't know very many people, a few, but I didn't know too many people. And all of a sudden, I realized that I could be in almost any city in the country and be in a room filled with the same kind of passion that you have here in Austin. You are part of a national movement. Impact Austin is part of Catalyst, I think, isn't that right?
Yes.
Good, I had to double-check that. Always good to check your data when you work in an institution of higher education. But, so Impact Austin is part of Catalyst. Catalyst is one of several infrastructure organizations within the giving circle ecosystem. But the research says that this model of engagement has grown a tremendous amount. So there was a landscape done, scan done in 2007, and in 2017, there was another landscape scan done. And what we learned is that the number of giving circles in this country has, does anybody want to throw out a percentage increased by?
60%.
That would be nice. Threefold. So it grew from roughly 500 giving circles 10 years ago to more than 1,500 giving circles today. You are part of a huge movement. And not only that, but it's global. Of all places, there are a lot of giving circles in Australia. And why? Because women from the United States have gone to Australia and have been unabashed advocates, like Diane is. And they are growing in all sorts of unexpected places. It is a global movement. So on top of that, we've learned that there's a lot of growth in identity-based giving circles. Women, of course, are the majority, but this is happening also in African-American communities, in Latino communities, in LGBTQ communities, younger people, I mean, it's happening everywhere. The only place we don't see quite as much growth? Thank you. Is among the men. And what an opportunity we have here. So it'll be interesting to see whether it continues to expand from that perspective. 60% of giving circles are formed around a particular identity. Women's giving circles, like Impact Austin, are the most common. And 70% of all groups reported that women make up more than half of their membership. Well, let's talk about money. Somebody here really likes money. Over the past nearly 40 years, giving circles have contributed about? $7 million? Oh, no, that's only here. $1.3 billion to their local communities. You are part of a huge network. Now, let's talk about the age of the giving circles, not the age of the members in the giving circles, but the age of the giving circles themselves. I thought this was really kind of interesting. The first giving circle that we really have a record of is about 1982, same age as my son, amazingly enough, so I know that that's 37. But nearly 95% of the giving circles in the survey that was done were formed since 2000. 95% formed since 2000. Impact Austin clearly is one of those. 46% launched between 2010 and 2017. There are people in communities outside of Austin who are listening and learning to the experiences that you're having, and they're saying, "We can do this in our community too." And some of you may have relatives in other cities that say, "Wow, you're having a great time, we should have a great time too." There are giving circles in every state. California, not surprising, has the most, 170, or something like that. So there's an adage, you've seen one foundation, you've seen one foundation, you've seen one family, you've seen one family, and the same is true for giving circles. There are lots of varieties of giving circles out there. Here are two key, two key takeaways from the research. First of all, and Diane, you alluded to this, giving circles are good for philanthropy. We do believe that they are an antidote to this decline in giving because they engage more people in this incredible work. And when you celebrate, like you're doing tonight, and we all celebrate together as a way to encourage more giving. What we found is that giving circle members are more knowledgeable about their community. That's one of the great values, I think, of the Grants Committee, and learning about that, and reading the LOIs and doing the site visits. Giving circle members become more knowledgeable about the community. They're also more strategic about their own philanthropy. And they give more than non-giving circle members. So there's something about this model of engagement that is so powerful and just sort of takes us head, heart, and hands in a way that we ultimately want to give more. And I heard earlier today some stories about Impact Austin members who get involved with the organizations that aren't funded, whether by giving dollars to support them, by joining boards. I see some heads nodding. The story is familiar to you. The other one, and I want to reaffirm what you said, Diane, is this idea of the democratization of philanthropy. The identity-based giving circles in and of themselves very often stay with an identity. But when you look at the whole of them, the entire ecosystem, it's a pluralism, and people just all across every kind of identity that you can think of, together, it's a powerful group. So those are the two main key takeaways from the research.
Thank you. So Diane, so just this, they have so many different models of giving circles, right? And that, and what you, what we're also finding is that philanthropy is expanding to encompass more models. Tell us about the convergence of for-profit and nonprofit, and what the implications of this blurring means for Impact Austin.
This convergence of for-profit and nonprofits, or the blurring of the lines, you know, we see it in all aspects of our world, right? We see it both on the side of nonprofits trying to emulate for-profits with efficiency metrics and, you know, operationalizing strategic goals and et cetera, et cetera. But we see it most profoundly, and that's been going on for decades, but we see it most profoundly in the for-profit world, right? Where they are, I would say, encroaching a bit in the domain of the traditional charitable sector. You know, there's so many examples. Crowdfunding, right? People giving to charity in non-tax-efficient ways. People forming entities that look like foundations, but they're actually LLCs, so they are unburdened by compensation practices and transparency and limitations on lobbying and political work. We see it in impact investing, right? Aligning your portfolio in ways that mirror your personal values. We see it in cause-related purchasing, conscious consumerism. And if I were concerned about any of those models, it would be that last one, right? Where for-profit organizations embed into their DNA a charitable mission that entails often direct service, you know, the one-for-one model, provisions of goods. And what we know from our research is that women, to a certain extent, but millennials of genders, both genders, tend to replace traditional charitable giving with cause-related purchasing, right? And I'm just here to say, I hadn't dug in deep in all the organizations and all the models, but we've got real expertise in the charitable sector about how to address some of these intractable problems that come from these systemic issues. And not that we don't invite new players and innovation to the game, but if it's a zero-sum game, and there's going to be an encroachment on the funds provided to traditional nonprofits, I sit up straight and I get concerned. And so what I advise our nonprofit clients to really lean into their power, don't just mimic the for-profit social entrepreneurs, right? But really amplify your story around impact, because that's what donors are really after. And they're trying to scratch that itch for impact with their consumerism as well. And more importantly, perhaps, extend an olive branch, right? I don't believe that social entrepreneurs are just out for the buck. I think they're blending these structures in ways that are designed to do well and do good at the same time. And can we collaborate in that effort? Now, what does that mean for Impact Austin? Well, I think you got a little endowment fund tucked away somewhere. Maybe you're growing it over time. Think about whether you should be engaged in gender lens investing with those assets. We used to believe that to engage in ESG investment meant that your returns would be concessionary. That's not true. Our research is clear over years that the gender lens portfolio in particular has done really, really well. Now, I'm sure there's a regulatory issue there. Disclaimer, disclaimer, disclaimer. We're talking about philanthropy here. Let me, let me rewind. So, but the other thing I would say is, you know, as you look at your grant-making portfolio, to continue to think creatively about the ways in which you invest your grants. I mean, as a public charity grantmaker, you could do direct investments in businesses that are owned by women. There are other things that you could do creatively. Certainly be thinking about your next-gen. I love your leaders that are younger girls that are already cutting their teeth, the G3s in this space, but know that they've got these competing pressures. And they're getting lots of messages in their Instagram feed and other places about how things that they buy will make the world a better place and continue to advocate for the power of the traditional charitable sector and not back off of the truth in that value proposition.
Yeah, I mean, I'm getting a strong sense that philanthropy is ever-evolving. And thinking about these changes and opportunities can be totally overwhelming, all right? Lots to learn. So Diane, can you please remind us about why? I mean, you went into it a little bit about it already, but the deep engagement that is needed of so many of our Impact Austin members and why it matters?
I mean, if it only mattered for one reason, and I don't have to look much further than rows one, two, and three, you do it because it makes you happy, does it not? I mean, you know it experientially. You don't fill up this room and write a big check. That's not an inconsequential check that you write for the privilege of being in this room if it didn't bring you great joy. And our research bears that out. Particularly for women, giving to charity makes you happy. It correlates with life satisfaction. Volunteering, by the way, and you get to do both with Impact Austin, even more so, brings you joy. So a great reason to be in this room.
So this particular study, I love this study. When people say to me, "We have more than 125 data points now over 10 years of research." People say, "Well, what's your favorite study?" And this is the one, because Diane called it "The Philanthropy Happiness Report." And I never, I mean, it's just, it is what it is. So giving makes us happy, and sometimes we forget, and we have to be reminded. And that's why we come together in the town hall and the other events that we have to celebrate together. But there was a gender difference in this. So giving makes everybody happy, but it makes us happy, men and women, at different points in the cycle. So for men, men get a greater life satisfaction when they make a gift, generally a first gift. For women, they get a greater sense of life satisfaction when they increase their giving as a percentage of their permanent income. So I think we're hardwired, we women, to give, and then when we understand the impact, the difference that we're making, when we understand the collective impact, our impulse is to use our resources to do more. So thank you for labeling that one, "The Philanthropy Happiness Report."
So I understand that the Women's Philanthropy Institute has conducted research on gender and giving across communities of color. Is the face of philanthropy changing?
So the reality is that the face of philanthropy has always been men and women. It's just that men have gotten more front covers, shall we say. Women have always been generous throughout society, especially in this country. This particular study shed a light on giving in communities of color because there are a lot of stereotypes, there are a lot of myths, there are a lot of misperceptions about giving. I mean, you heard from Simone that in her family, giving was part of the DNA. It's what you talked about at the dinner table. It's what your parents taught you, right? So this particular study found that all women are generous. End of sentence, period. I could stop there, but I won't. Academic researchers like to create a level playing field for their research on charitable giving. So the research that we do at the Lilly Family School of Philanthropy takes into account the kinds of factors that can affect charitable giving. And the three main ones are wealth, income, and education. Wealth being your assets, income being your paycheck. And the study found that a donor's race does not have a significant effect on the amount given to charity. So race doesn't have an effect there. Everybody gives. All people, all people from all races are generous. Now, there were differences when we looked at volunteering. So volunteering can be defined into two categories, formal and informal. Formal is what we measure. Informal is what we do for each other, and it's virtually impossible to measure. Communities of color are less engaged in formal volunteering. They're highly engaged in informal volunteering. This is a huge opportunity for those of us who work with nonprofits to look at our systems. What's that phrase, organizational?
Operationalizing strategy.
Yeah, operationalizing strategy, big words. But the idea is to say, we have to meet people where they are, and we have to use language that resonates with the people that we're trying to address. So I think somebody here earlier said that we're learning new languages, and this is, this is part of what this study would suggest. The study also demonstrated that generosity is common across race and ethnicity and gender differences, because, you know, we always have to have a gender piece in everything we do. We are the Women's Philanthropy Institute. So gender differences are consistent across race and ethnicity. And what this means in this particular case is that what we found in communities of color is the same as we found when we do aggregate studies that factor race in. I mean, consider race as one of those factors. Single women are more likely to give than single men, and married couples are more likely to give than either single women or single men. And that's true across all communities of color. This was a huge finding. This was not part of the research literature until this study came out. Anything you want to add about your own experiences?
I would say, you know, and well, you said, color really doesn't matter coming down to the basis of it. But when I think of who I give to, and back to that question as far as what I value, you know, I think of my church community. You know, I probably give majority to my church community from day one. What's that?
You're not alone.
Right. And then the organization I work for, you know? I give a lot, and then when, when, when I think of, and I think joining Impact Austin was another way of me expanding that breadth of giving. And, but I can, it's really interesting to see who I give to. And then when I think about the informal aspects of my giving, it probably, I would say, I probably do more, like 60%, and I give a lot. So it's fascinating to see.
We always like it when the personal experiences affirm the research.
Oh my gosh. So, well, I think we're going to have a video. Thank you all so much for sharing, and we're going to come back.
We'll be back.
We have this great video that we're going to share. Okay, so we want to recognize the members of Impact Austin who have been here between two to five years. Can you stand? Thank you. Then the members who've been around for five to 10 years, please stand. Thank you. What about 11 to 15 years? And then what about 16 years? Thank you. You are what makes Impact Austin possible. So we have a wonderful treat for you tonight because we're gonna be proud of who we are, okay?
All right, friends. Andrea Pachter and I go way back. I mean, way, way, way back. And she knows me really, really well. And she knows that I love philanthropy the most, but I also really love yoga. So she has been on me for more years than I can count to create a philanthropy yoga pose. I have taken her up on this challenge, and we're gonna do it together, okay? This is the world debut of the WPI philanthropy yoga pose. So on your feet, on your feet. It can be done in five-inch heels. Don't you worry, don't you worry, don't you worry. And then I want you to lift your hands up to the sky and your gaze. And I want you to tap into the possible of the universe. And imagine your greatest aspirations. It's the tricky part, ladies, we can do it. Gently float your hands down on the shoulder of your neighbors. The shoulders of your neighbors, the shoulders of your neighbors. And in this moment, I want you to connect your wisdom, your gifts, your dreams with the women by your side. And inspired, lean into the power of women's collective giving to make Austin healthier, better educated, and more humane. Namaste, Impact Austin!